I'd like to say good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Vice Chairperson, Dr. Hall Leonard, excuse me, and to the Franklin City Public Schools Board of Education and to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Roy Geiger, Superintendent, Ms. Sterling. We would like to give you an overview of dual enrollment in Franklin City Public Schools. And I'd like to draw your attention to the board. So at Franklin City Public Schools, our dual enrollment, we would like to present to you the three-year trend. And we'll do an executive summary, what is dual enrollment? The benefits of dual enrollment? What does dual enrollment look like in FCPS? An FCPS Dual Enrollment Three-Year Trend Data, focusing on credits and dual enrollment costs by year. Our executive summary. Franklin City Public Schools Dual Enrollment Offer Students Courses That Meet Requirements For High School Graduation While Simultaneously Earning College Credit At Paul D. Camp Community College. Grades are awarded according to the policies of the college and credit earned for the courses taken can be transferred to other colleges and universities. And we enjoy the partnership. So what are the benefits of dual enrollment? High school credit and college credit. College credit is transferable. Dual enrollment entitles students to access Paul D. Camp Community College campus library and other resources. Also introduces students to rigor of college-level work. And dual enrollment can save time and tuition and provide affordable college credit for high school students. Dual enrollment in Franklin City Public Schools is collaborative effort between Franklin High School and Paul D. Camp Community College through which students are permitted to enroll in college. Dual enrollment offers courses are offered during the regular school day, which is a benefit, so they don't have to come at night and on weekends. What does dual enrollment look like in Franklin City Public Schools? Whether location is either on the campus of Franklin High School or on the campus of Paul D. Camp Community College. Instructors, high school teachers, certified and college professors. Classroom, high school students only and a targeted population. The eligibility requirements are according to the Franklin City Public Schools policy.
Good evening, Mr. Hope, Dr. Hall Leonard, school board members, Ms. Sterling, and also Mr. Williams and Dr. Geiger. And I'm going to continue with the costs and the credits. We actually did some, we met with the high school principal. We also met with guidance counselor. And we looked at trend data and they also gave us the projections for the upcoming school year. And that's the information that you're going to see on the screen here. So on the screen, you can see school years 2015, 2016, 2016, 2017, and a projection for 2017, 2018. And first graph, you can see that's on my left, I guess that will be your left too. You'll see that the dual enrollment credits are there by year and it's based on our budget. So for 2015, 2016, we've had students take 943 credits for dual enrollment. In school year 1617, they took 900 dual enrollment credits. But based on our budget, to stay within our budget, we are actually down to 120 credit hours for this school year. But that's not where we want to be. We want our students to be, actually be able to be competitive with the local school divisions. So our trend data that we're going to see projected for 1718 after talking to Mr. Phelps and Ms. Massenberg at Franklin High School, our students are, really, they're ready to take 1,193 credit hours. And you can see that on the slide that's on my right. So you can see that 1516, 1617 are the same, but the difference is the projection, is what we have budgeted and what we would like for our students to take. And that's where we would like for you to consider. And so that's the slide that deals with the credits. The next slide is the cost. And that's kind of where we are. So if you look at school year, Pam, can you make a go up to the screen and explain? School year 1516, we paid out 1,000, excuse me, $138,141. School year 1617, we paid out $140,364. And if we go on the 120 credits sort of within our budget, that would be about 18,288. But if we went on with our students eligible to take and we would like for them to take, it will cost us, it's going to cost us $181,813. And with Paul D. Camp, they were reimbursing us for part of it. If a class was taken on our campus, we received 100% reimbursement. But if the class was taken on their campus by their professor, then we were getting approximately 75% reimbursement. But now, we're not going to receive any reimbursement for classes taken on their campus. But if our teacher is teaching it in our high school, we would still receive the same 100% reimbursement. So that's kind of where we are in our trend and we want you to be aware of where we are. A little.
Let's look at the budget for the 2017-2018 school year. And what we have allocated in the budget for this current year is 17,000. And as Ms. Conaway just stated, the current reality to accommodate all the students for dual enrollment, it would be $181,813. Now minus that, with the $17,000 we have budgeted, our current need would be 164,813. And a little caveat, that's not including textbooks. We wanted to give you an overview of just what that three-year data trend looked like for our students. 2015, 2016, approximately 45 students. And on the advanced placement side, there were three students. And in that last column, what you'll see is advanced placement exam costs. Because the student that takes advanced placement must take the advanced placement exam. 2016, 2017, that was 51 students. And we had two students take advanced placement courses. And that advancement exam was $93. And now for the 2017-18 school year, we have projected 60 students and have projected 60 students to take advanced placement and still at the cost of $93. So what courses do we offer in advanced placement at Franklin High School? AP English Literature and Composition, AP Geography, AP US History, Psychology, and Environmental The dual enrollment course offerings are English 12, Pre-Capless, Calculus, Biology, US History, and US and Virginia Government. We also want to bring to your attention this dual enrollment CTE course offerings. And each one of these are Part 1 and Part 2. Robotics, Principles of Technology, HVAC, which is Air Condition and Heating, Welding, Fire Science, and Emergency Medical Technician. So what we did was immediately went out to the community and we had a series of meetings. Our first meeting was held on July the 17th, where we brought forth the committee. And some of the committee members included, central office personnel, Mr. Phelps, high school principal, Ms. Massenberg, the guidance school counselor at Franklin High School, overhead bound representative, parents, and community members, and also CTE advisory board member. We held another meeting on July the 18th. The central focus, central office team solicited feedback from the administrative teams at Franklin City Public Schools and Paul D. Camp. In attendance, Mr. Phelps, high school principal, Ms. Massenberg, school counselor, Paul D. Camp representatives, and central office personnel. And the focus of these meetings were looking at dual enrollment and policy on dual enrollment in Franklin City Public Schools. And we held a wonderful meeting on the campus of Franklin High School facilitated by Ms. Sterling, our superintendent, and also Mr. Phelps. And we collaborated with 15 Franklin High School students, which spanned from grades 10 through grades 12. And our students were very expressive in their concerns about dual enrollment and the need for dual enrollment. And offered some wonderful recommendations that we would like to share with you at this time. Out of this three meetings we held and the student representative meetings, you will see recommendations for the policy revision. And here they are. Increase the grade point average from a 2.0 to a 3.3. And let me say, our current policy says a 2.0 for students that would like to take dual enrollment courses. So student, and students must maintain the 3.3 overall grade point average to enroll in additional dual enrollment courses that the division pays for. Another recommendation, the division will pay for 50% and parents will pay for 50% of dual enrollment course, up to four courses as stated in the current policy. And I do echo current policy.
Excuse me, Mr. Edwards.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe the current policy just says a C average.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
But you are more specific here what you're bringing to us, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Pinpointing what that grade point average ought to be, Dr. Hall Leonard.
Yes.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Parents pay for 100% of tuition. And after the fourth dual enrollment course, according to our current policy, dual enrollment courses that parents pay for will factor into the student's grade point average. And we looked at the equity benefits and non-benefits of that third bullet because there may be some students who cannot pay for the dual enrollment courses due to financial hardships. So solutions to the financial hardships would be to offer financial scholarships for students that cannot pay the 50% after the fourth dual enrollment course. And also, there was a wonderful recommendation from a student in the committee meeting that stated, hey, what about soliciting financial pledges to our community that would help defer the cost of dual enrollment courses? And again, I cannot echo the voices that were at the table with our students. It was just magnificent and amazing to hear what they had to say. And not, as they say, have a meeting of complaints, but a meeting of solutions. And that's due to what's going on at Franklin High School under the leadership of the administrative team from Mr. Phelps and Mr. Thor. And so here are the recommendations from the three collaborative meetings held within the community. And it's a topic of great concern and we're working to come up with solutions. And through this effort, we feel we can come up with solutions to what we're facing with due to dual, in our dual enrollment situation. And I must say, it is still because of budget constraints. That is the piece that has given us a crush with the budget. And at this time, to the board, this brings a conclusion to our dual enrollment presentation. And thank you. And also to the office.
Could I just ask a point of clarification for everyone gathered here tonight? Could you please briefly describe what our current policy is?
Yes, ma'am.
And?
And I do have handouts for the audience. Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mr. Edwards. So our current policy states, and I won't paraphrase, let me pull the policy. And we're handing, the board has it, Ms. Conaway?
We have.
Yes, and pass it out to the audience. Yeah, thank you. So the current policy states that Franklin City Public Schools supports enrollment of students in advanced placement and dual enrollment courses. And here are the following guidelines set forth regarding these courses. Advanced placement, students enrolled in advanced placement courses are required to take the subsequent advanced placement test as prescribed. Franklin City Public Schools will pay the cost for taking the test. And that was that $93 that you saw on the slide. Any student enrolled in an advanced placement course who does not take the test will not receive a weighted credit for the course. And let me say this, the advanced placement courses, they are at a higher weight. It is 4.5, 4.5. Dual enrollment, students must pass the community, excuse me, 5.0, excuse me. Dual enrollment students must pass the community college placement test to be eligible for dual enrollment in dual enrollment courses. Franklin City Public Schools pays for dual enrollment courses each semester, provided students maintain a C average or better in their specific courses each semester. The school division will not pay for any second semester dual enrollment course if a student's average is below a C at the end of the first semester in that specific course. In addition, the school division will not pay for any further dual enrollment courses if at the end of the school year, a student's average for both semesters is below a C in any given dual enrollment course. A special note, Franklin City Public Schools will only pay for two dual enrollment courses per student, per year, after the 2008-2009 school year. The two courses per year may not exceed 16 credit hours. Additional dual enrollment credit hours per year above 16 will be at the expense of the student or parents. And this adopted is revised on July 16, 2009. And that is our current policy.
So could you also, just for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
That in practice has not been, that's what, when you look at the budget number, it is not in accordance with this policy or the trend data.
That is correct, Ms. Jester. It is not.
And I think that's important to note, that we have not been following the written policy as stated in, that you just went over.
Right.
And that's part of the reason why we're at this disconnect today, is if we follow policy, we're at one number versus what we had been doing in the past. And I think that's a really important point for everyone to understand.
Yes, ma'am. And so let me just echo, Ms. Jester, we have not been following the policy and which, as you just stated, kind of led to which, where we are now. Because we've been opening up the floodgates for dual enrollment course-taking.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jester, for that clarification. And Mr. Edwards.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to thank Ms. Sterling for moving forward and helping us after seeing where we are and trying to move your staff in the right direction to create a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, mister. Thank you to the board.
I received quite a few calls on this and I find there's a lot of false information out in the community. And this is a complicated issue. But I agree with Dr. Hall Leonard, Ms. Sterling, and Mr. Edwards, everyone. The committees, the process, I think you've come up with about the best solution that we can come up with, given the facts we're dealing with. So I would like to thank you for that.
I also would like to reiterate that we haven't solved the problem this evening. And I believe, Ms. Sterling, you correct me if I'm wrong, you will continue to receive suggestions. Parents are open to call you, call the high school, Mr. Phelps, they can offer recommendations, continue to ask questions, and we will try to move forward to resolve.
Exactly, and thank you for that. We are going to continue that open dialogue because we have to make certain that we revise the policy for the next school year. But at this time, we are more than open to work with our parents when it comes to dual enrollment, so they understand that we are now moving back to following the policy.
I also think there's quite a few organizations that, charities, that are willing to contribute to scholarships. So that's a big help, I think. So it's going to be a community effort.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Sterling?
No, Chairman Holt, thank you.
Item 6.1, Franklin High School Fee Schedule.
Below you will find the fee schedule for the 1718 school year, submitted on July 26. Band uniforms, rental fee of $30, band instrumental uniform fee $40, band auxiliary uniform fee $60, excuse me, concert band jacket fee $10, transcripts six, senior dues this year is $55, and that should be no change, is that correct? There's no change?
None of this has changed.
Correct. Behind-the-wheel driver education, cost is $95, parking decals for our students 10, and locker fees are 10. Again, none of the fees have changed this year.
Any questions on our fees at the high school? Is there a motion to approve the fees as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Franklin High School 2017-2018 fee schedule as presented.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the fee schedule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Policy, I G A B. This would be a revision of our dual enrollment and advanced placement. So I'm assuming that we're going to rewrite that policy, is that correct?
Yes, we're going to rewrite that policy.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back to the board.
Okay. Item 6.3, non-school employment by staff members. We have a copy of that.
I have one question, is this a change in policy or is it just a reaffirmation of one that already exists?
This is the current policy.
Is there a concern?
My concern with the current policy is that it leaves it up to the employee to determine whether the secondary employment interferes with their current Franklin employment. And I would like to see some language that says they discuss that with their supervisor and gain approval. So their supervisor will know.
Ms. Sterling, does this particular policy GCQA mirror the V S B A policy?
Yes, it does, actually.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we did look at it and it does mirror it.
Okay. Are we having concerns in the district with this, with non-employment, non-school employment?
I think we are.
Okay.
So Chairman Holt, is this something that we're going to look at to bring back to the board for revision?
Yeah. Maybe we can table that and work on it.
That's fine.
Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Item 6.4, Authorization to Request Appropriation.
Good evening, everyone. In your, in your board packet, you'll find a Authorization to Request Appropriation. And Franklin City Public Schools received the attached Special Education 2016-2017, Part B, Section 611, flow-through sub-grant awards notification, and the amount of $1,222. And we just ask that these forms are approved so that we may increase the 2017-18 budget by the 1,222.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Special Education 2016-2017, Part B, Section 611, flow-through sub-grant awards.
We have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam is down to one and a half jobs now, huh? 6.5, V S B A Policy Services Agreement. It appears that this is just to renew our policy process with them, is that correct?
Correct.
Any discussion or do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the V S B A Policy Services Agreement as provided in our board materials.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 6.6, Franklin City School Board Salary Scale. I'm not really sure what that is, if we need to take any action or if that was presented just for information.
I have a question. Were you prepared?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you were coming forward for the question. No, I thought you were going to review the policy.
Oh, okay. In your packet, you will see Policy BHD, and it just states that school board members compensate, compensation and benefits. It just says that each member of the Franklin City School Board shall receive an annual salary as provided by law. Actual expenses incident to performance of official duties by a school board member may be reimbursed on presentation of an expense voucher with receipts attached. Compensation is paid for mileage incurred for attendance at a meeting of a school board and in conducting other official business of the school board. School board members may participate in the division's group health insurance, group insurance plan.
And then the next document lists the, it lists the several school districts. However, I don't see Franklin City. That's my question. I didn't see Franklin City.
And what I did was, I did some research just to find out how other localities are paid. And when I went to the Virginia School Law Code section, I was able to find this information. And it is in accordance with what is listed on our policy at the bottom where it has references to the code of Virginia.
Okay.
So yes, ma'am. But I could not tell you as to why Franklin City was not listed.
Okay. My other question is, in our budget, is it already within the budget that we've approved for this school year? Typically, I believe we set the salary for school board members and then we approve that. Has it already been approved within our budget that was presented by Mrs. Mine?
Yes, ma'am. A salary line is set up for board members.
Okay, so that we've already approved it?
Yes, ma'am.
So then we don't need to take action?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's the same as last year?
Yes, sir. It's the same as last year.
The other question was the, the difference, go back to the, the actual policy.
Yes, ma'am.
For Franklin City, in our policy, the chairman versus other board members, do we have a distinction?
No, ma'am. In the policy, there is no distinction. However, I did research to see what past chairman and vice, and board members were paid, and there is a difference in those salaries.
For Franklin City?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, but that is not on our policy, B H?
No, ma'am. It's not outlined in the policy as to how much each is paid.
But is it, but it's not outlined in the policy, what I'm asking, not for the specific amount?
No, no, ma'am.
I'm not seeing here that we have the difference for board members versus chairman in our policy.
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am, it is not listed.
So should that be something that we will review?
I would recommend to Ms. Sterling for the board to possibly revise that so that it is delineated.
Because that's what we typically do.
In the past, it has not been there.
But we have?
Had a difference.
We had a difference, but it's not in our policy.
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess what I'm asking of the board, if we're going to continue that, I don't see a problem with it. Wouldn't we need to have that in our policy? I saw Mr. Williams sit up.
I'm trying to get in edgewise here. Actually, to understand how all this works together, I want to do a little education. If you'll take a close look at 22.1-32, that's the code section that talks about the salary of members.
Yes.
In Section A, it says any elected school board. Well, you're not an elected school board, so you can skip A.
Okay.
And so the reference in A to 15.2-14, 14.1 has no implications as to the salary of an appointed school board. B says appointed s- B says, "Appointed school boards of the following counties." You're not a county, it doesn't apply.
So that's probably why we're not listed?
That's why you're not listed.
That answers my question. Thank you.
So if you go down to C, "The appointed school boards of the following cities." Now, it doesn't name all cities. It only names certain cities. And so Franklin is not listed in this group, and so it does not apply. Now, when you get down to subsection D, E, and F, well, let's do D and E first. There is a distinction in state law between the chairman's salary and the rest of the salaries. And that is $2,000 per year upon passage of an appropriate resolution. So it does address it in the state code section there. I would point out that the city code, under city code Section 2-73, which is also referenced in the city charter. I don't know how accurate these, this information is because the, there could have been appropriations subsequent to what's actually in the code, code in the charter right now that hasn't been updated as far as those documents are concerned. But the charter had the chairman being paid at $4,050 and had the other members of the school board being paid at $2,560. I have no idea if that is what y'all are being paid at this point. But there is, it does recognize that distinction between the chair versus the other school board members.
Excuse me, Mrs. Kindred? So is that?
Yes. According to the research, that is correct. The board chair's compensation is $4,050 and the board member's compensation is $2,560.
Yes.
All right, going, now going back to the code section that's in your board docs. Paragraph E talks about mileage, using private vehicles, going to conventions, meetings, and that sort of thing. So that, of course, mirrors what is in the policy. Looking at F.
Can we go back to the policy? I think whoever's on this technology, we're going back and forth.
Don't really need to go back to the policy, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Williams, I need to see it. Because I know you know it.
All right.
I'm with you now.
I'll wait till you.
They're there.
I'm just saying, your policy corresponds to what is in this code section, 22.1-32, paragraph E. So it does allow for the reimbursement of the mileage and that sort of thing. F is where we really get into, if you'll excuse the expression, the meat and potatoes of your salaries. And so, "No appointed school board shall request the general assembly's consideration of an increase." And see, that language there refers to that subsection C where it's listing the cities and appointed school board members, okay? If you skip down to 2, you see you have a F1 and a F2. "A local school board representing a city may establish a salary increase prior to December 31." So if you were going to do a salary increase, you needed to have looked at that December 31 of 2016. You follow that part?
Yes, yes.
All right, and so, and which members are to be elected or appointed? So it applies to appointed school boards. "Such increase shall be effective on July 1 of the year in which the election or appointment occurs." So if it is an appointment year, and of course, we are on a staggered basis, and there'll be more about the staggered basis. So it gets a little bit misleading there, but if, you know, but the statute says a staggered, I mean, an appointed basis occurs prior to July 1 and shall become effective January 1. So essentially, the calendar would look like if you were going to, by appropriation, proper resolution and appropriation, seek a salary increase for the school division, you needed to do something before December 31. And then if your appointment comes up June, July 1, June 30, July 1, it would become effective January 1 of the following year. So if you made provisions in, before December 31 of 2016, the salary would not take, increase would not take effect until January 1, 2018. Complicated stuff.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I want to go back to our policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Then we do need to have that delineation in our policy, and it is not there.
Yes, ma'am.
That was my question. Thank you. You've been very helpful, Ms. Kindred. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. And I would point out, the very last line says, "It can become effective in an incumbent member's term of office," which is important. So because you are a staggered board, if, what they're essentially saying is, if the board is going to increase its salary, then the increase is going to be effective for everyone at the same time, even though you are appointed on a staggered basis.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. What I'd like to remember. I had either August the 8th or 9th for V S B A goals. Do we know which date that is yet? Our regular meeting is the 17th. We have a convocation at the beginning of school on the 22nd. Do we need to have our work session on August 3rd?
On August what?
3rd, uh, 3rd.
I have to look at my calendar.
That's the 1st Thursday.
So we're scheduled, we're scheduled for a work session on the, on the 3rd, am I correct?
Right.
And so what were you asking?
How about, I'm asking, do we have business to do on that day? Do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, we'll meet on the 3rd for a work session.
We're hoping you were saying no.
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
And we'll find out about V S B A shortly. Business by school board members, what do you have?
I just have that I had the opportunity of attending the J R O T C. This is a shout out to the high school. The J R O T C, J C L C. I know it is a leadership program for the students that are in junior R O T C. And it was held, I believe, in Bowling Green, Virginia, Fort AP Hill. And we should be very proud of our students. It was a long drive, but it was excellent to see the students who participated. I want to shout out, I believe it's First Sergeant, get these names right, Robinson. And then is, is it Lieutenant or?
Lieutenant Colonel Wright.
Yes, and Lieutenant Colonel Wright for being there and being there with our students. Parents traveled from the city to support the students. Our students received certificates. It was a wonderful program. Thank you for the job that they're doing. Let them know that we really appreciate the job that they're doing with leadership and character building at the high school. Also attended, I believe I saw Mrs. Burgess earlier, the Tidewater Regional Governor's School for the Arts. They had their closing ceremony that was held at Pioneer Elementary School this summer. I'm sure Mrs. Burgess is beaming with pride with Franklin City School students who participated. The pictures were taken, they received their certificates. And it was a beautiful program as well. So shout out to the gifted program of type 2 students.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to add in, we have been fortunate in this area to have Verizon come in to Paul D. Camp Community College and offer a girls-only STEM camp for middle school girls. This is a pilot program for Verizon. They actually only picked five community colleges throughout the country to participate. And we were very fortunate to have one, Paul D. Camp, be one of those colleges. And we're also very fortunate that we have quite a few girls that will be in our middle school next year that are attending this year. They're actually having their community expo this Friday from 1:00 to 3:00. I'm looking forward to attending and seeing what our girls have been doing and what they can do. I know that they've been working with a lot of cutting-edge technology, 3D printing, 3D pins, robots, virtual reality goggles. And they're very excited to show us what they've learned and what they can do. And the really cool thing is it's not just a three-week camp. It's going to continue on throughout the entire year. This is an excellent, excellent opportunity for these girls. So, big shout out to them for participating and having this opportunity.
Also attended the Affomatics Governor's School, which I found out is in Petersburg. And I was very impressed with that. That's quite a school. Very impressed. Any other items? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, discussion. Want to officially welcome Dr. Geiger as our chief academic officer. It's good to have you back with us. And to welcome Ms. Tam, I believe it's Tammy Moore, it's our new board clerk. This was her first evening on the dais with us. Welcome. And we want to acknowledge city council representative tonight, the Honorable Mr. Benny Burgess. Thank you for being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Where adjourned?